Meeting order, ask for anybody to rise from the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the June 16th and 21st meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is approval of claims for payment dated 6/23/21.
Motion to approve claims for payment for June 23rd, 21.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thomas, emergency management update. Good morning.
Good morning. Just have one thing to update, and if Michael will pull up the one document. I had a question about the legitimacy of the text that went out to all the WENZ users. So our past users of our mass notification system got a text message that said to sign up. There was a question about it because it goes directly to the Smart 911 website and app to register. And that is the official name of the site that we're using for registration. These other three logos, my county emergency management, Green Belt Home Care, and Alert Iowa, are the three logos that will be on all the publicity. The 911 is a registered, and I don't want to use that on a bunch of publicity that I put out. We're the ones sponsoring it. And then 911, the Smart 911 is the app behind it. So just clarifying that when people go in to sign up for the Alert Iowa, it is going to go to Smart 911, and that is a legitimate site, and it is a secure site. So.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect, thank you, Thomas. We don't have any utility permits. Taylor, do you have anything exciting to share?
They should continue some paving operations tomorrow on Hubbard is the plan. So we're working through that. And then we have a meeting about another bridge project starting soon. That's the one on M Avenue, just off of Highway 65. And gotten a lot of calls in the last month about people asking me if they can break the state law. So I give them all the exact same answer that I will not give that permission. And then I had somebody yesterday claim that I gave them permission, so that's not true.
Roadside mowing and baling of grass.
And the guy mowing yesterday is not mowing it to bail, he's just mowing it to mow, to make it look nice. It's not his property, well, none of it's his property. It's all in city limits, old state highway, so it's owned by the city.
Okay.
But if I can avoid a couple angry phone calls that are mad at me for no reason, it'd be wonderful, but.
So just to maybe educate or clarify why the mowing dates are on is because of nesting wildlife.
Correct.
Both pheasant and other mammals that nest and have their habitat in the roadside ditches.
Yep, so they pick a safe date. I mean, because to be honest, they're probably all out of the ditch by now, but they wanted to pick a safe date. So I'm sure they gave themselves some room.
Right. And I see as I've traveled, an uptick in mowing and baling of those even not in Hardin County, but other counties. And forage and hay is a hot commodity right now. And so if you could bail, mow and bail and make an extra $500 or feed your livestock for an extra two or six or eight weeks, you're ahead in the game. So I understand the logic behind it. There's both the financial gain and there's also the taking care of your livestock as well. But understandable that it's still an issue of wildlife and destroying habitat, which may or may not be occupied by nesting animals.
And we have had two people come in and ask for permits. So they have kind of laid their stake to that ground. But that one does, I don't know if we can really control that one because it's in city limits in the first place. So I guess final permit with us doesn't really mean anything.
The magic date is, is it July 15th?
Right.
Each year.
There's no fee for the permit though, is there?
No.
So, but they are regarding the permit.
That's just kind of that saying, hey, I'm gonna do this, okay.
Okay.
And we do have permitting process.
Yeah.
It does ask that insurance.
Yep.
What else?
That's pretty much it.
That you have insurance.
You got the liability.
Location.
And the location, but they're all pretty vague on that. But, and that's okay.
All right. I have nothing else for Taylor.
Well, I can go on forever on this subject.
Exactly, yeah, let's not.
Thank you, Taylor.
You bet.
Michael, this time, can you open the public comment line? This time, anybody with public comment is more than welcome to speak.
It's Julie Dunn. Last week I asked that you put on the agenda, public attendance, in-person attendance at Board of Supervisors meetings. And so, no, my name isn't on there, but there will be discussion of that matter as on the agenda. So will I be able to speak then, or should I speak now?
Well, Julie, I'd be more than happy to allow you to speak now if you want, or during that discussion. Because I know that's something that you asked to have placed on the agenda that I believe we need to have a discussion about. So it's up to you, Julie.
Oh, I'll just wait and participate in discussion when we come to that agenda matter. Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and I'll move on to the discussion of in-person public attendance at meetings. Lance?
It's, it's hard to know who's all coming, who isn't.
Hello, this is Pauline, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, Pauline.
Hello, BJ, can you hear me? BJ, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
BJ, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you, Pauline.
Okay, I'm, I'm on phone, so I didn't know if you could hear me or not. I, I have a couple of comments. One's for Taylor. On the blacktop roads, especially the one, I don't know if it's D, D what it is, but it's the one that goes to through Garden City and there where you fixed all the bridges and you put culverts in, and then you just put gravel or rock over them, whatever. Are those going to be cemented in at all before, before wintertime or what?
Hello. You recently got the mortgage, I haven't.
Hello, hello?
Yes, Pauline, we are just waiting for a contractor to come and do the work.
Okay, because I was gonna say, the other day, I, I took that road and really got my car pelted by a semi that didn't slow down for that at all and was kind of really disgusted with that. So just wondered, I'm not taking that way any longer until I know that they're paved. And the other comment I have is kind of about the in-person meetings too. Kind of wanted to talk about that, so I guess I'll hold my comment off for that then too and talk more about that then when we reach that subject.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, I'll let you back to Lance, go ahead.
Will the in-person public coming in? And it's hard to regulate who's, how many people are coming here to regulate. Guest speaker, we have space. Have five people, if people coming in, especially hearings, don't have the space for a public. We are loaded, it's easy, Zoom and things like that. A guest speaker, regulate, like for instance, it's gonna be. You have, we're set up for Julie, but I don't know between all the department heads being over capacity and anything else, that that would be wise to open it up just randomly for a meeting.
Renee, additional comments?
I might be the odd one out here, but I'm, personally, I'm ready to set the room up as it was. Maybe not as many chairs there, I mean, we had a lot of people crammed in here at a time. And even then, sometimes back then, I thought, you know, it was a lot of people. But I'm ready to set some chairs up. I don't, I don't know how many we want to put in, but I think we could be messing with that this week to decide how many we can actually get in here that everybody feels comfortable with. As far as department heads and stuff, we're kind of our, back in the day, I think in COVID, we called them pods or whatever. I mean, we were, we were comfortable being around each other because we worked daily around each other. So I don't know, I don't want to deter department heads from coming if more public comes, but I'm also ready to allow public in to a reasonable amount, you know, 15, 20 people. I don't, I don't know. I'd like to just kind of work with it, set it up and see what everybody's comfortable with.
Right. I don't think you're the odd person out, and I don't think Lance's point is, is wrong by any means.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that at all.
There's gotta be a fine line of, you know, how many people and, but yet, we want to make sure that we have open meetings. Some of our neighboring counties, you know, before COVID, were fairly limited on how many people could fit into a room.
Right.
And so I've conferred with Randy Evans from the Iowa Freedom of Information Act Council, and, and there is that balancing act between making sure that you have open and transparent government and what we've learned about public health and not being on top of each other and breathing down each other's necks, which requires a balancing act, but it also requires some, you know, respect out of other, out of everybody in attendance. So my thought is, you know, to allow more people to come in and, but knowing that our department has oftentimes are here to present something, or in the events of the trails people or somebody with a fireworks permit, depending on the agenda, it could get really full really quick. When it comes to public hearings, I think like we're doing today with our drainage landowners meeting, we're moving it to a larger venue in anticipation of a larger crowd. So, you know, it's gotta be that delicate balance where, you know, Iowa Code Chapter 21, we want to be respectful of that, but we also need to look at how we can be respectful to one another's health and wellbeing as well.
Well, and I forgot to say, not only am I referring to the COVID part of it, but even as a fire issue. If you get, we get in here, 20, 30 people, maybe we need to have the fire department come in and measure and say how many are safe. If there were a fire and we had to get out, and you have how many people trying to get out to yours?
I think Thomas and I kind of looked at that, the occupancy is 15 square foot per person. And Taylor, you.
It was 17 people.
17 people safely in the room. So, go ahead, Thomas.
So we could do, you could do it like the, like the departments are doing it upstairs, is put the tags out to security. If people are coming that are on the agenda, or even us coming in, we can pick up a tag. And when security is out of tags, they know the room is full. But if you know you've got somebody coming in to speak specifically, then you can save one of those tags out so that you know you're not limiting a speaker of the group.
Yes.
And that also gives you accountability of what you got.
Right. At this point, anybody else here in the room have a comment? Julie, go ahead and, and I'd appreciate hearing your thoughts.
Yeah, so I didn't know if I'd be let in today, so I'm not, you know, wasting my time to get up there and then be confronted by a gun carrying hall monitor to question me on my business in the courthouse. Public, the public communicating with county officials is important. In an in-person meeting, there are a lot of ways to read different communications, body language, facial expression, tone of voice. Those things are important. And given that the governor herself thinks everything should just be wide open, then we need to decide, you know, are you gonna go with that or, or what? And with department heads, their inclusion in the meeting and counting them as attendants, perhaps they could just come down, give their report or whatever, and then go back to their office to undo their job communicating or serving, serving citizens. So maybe they don't always need to be there. I think it's important for transparency, for better communication with citizens, that in-person, in-person participation is important. You know, people who are fully vaccinated should, you know, shouldn't be restricted because some people choose not to do that. They choose not to be vaccinated, they choose not to protect themselves or others. I just think in-person, in-person participation is important. The nature of business that is done at the courthouse is not, has not theoretically changed. And transparency is good. And this goes both ways. Perhaps maybe it would be more efficient use of county funds if supervisors participated from their home, and therefore we wouldn't have to pay reimbursement for gasoline back and forth every day. So that's an option as well, thank you.
Pauline?
Pauline, did you have additional comments regarding opening the courthouse?
There is a comment up there.
That's from Lisa Lawler.
Okay, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Pauline.
My, my comments are, you know, before, when we came, there was not that many people in that room anyway. And I've been downstairs and where you have your flag and stuff behind you, that's, that's a pretty background, but you can back that up a little bit more and back your chairs up, have a little bit more seating that way. I've looked at that. And you could have more chairs in there. And besides, before, you never had that many people come anyway. So I don't really see what the big problem is. And like Julie said, people are vaccinated. And I'll probably still choose to wear a mask because I don't know how many of you guys are vaccinated. So I'll probably still wear my mask because I don't know about you guys. But I, I'm good. I know Julie's good. We know that we're fine and we're okay. So we're all right to be around groups and stuff of people. It's the other ones that are in there that we don't know about. Julie and I could sit side by side and it wouldn't matter because we're vaccinated. We're okay. It's the others that we don't know about. So I kind of don't really see what the big problem is about getting back together again, or unless, you know, most of Hardin County that comes there is not vaccinated like you guys. But I know the ones of us that always came were vaccinated. So I think you're kind of making a mountain out of a molehill. And according like Julie said to the governor, it's supposed to be wide open. We can meet in large gatherings. So you're not going by what the governor says, and I don't think you have the right to hold us back from not coming to the meetings. And I also forgot, my other comment on there that I forgot was about the fireworks. We're still too dry, and I think that should be turned down too. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I did. Yeah. I'm more than happy to have Thomas work with Kerry and Quaker Security to, you know, make sure that we have a number of badges there that when people get here for the meetings, that check them out until they're gone. And at that point, you know, it's kind of standing remotely. So, so I'm willing to take any recommendation or motion from you guys.
I'm ready to keep talking a little bit more.
Okay.
Renee, what do you think about the badge system that allows everybody as far as security who's in the building where, again, it's no different than any other office? You know, how many people are here, where they are? I don't think that was a bad option.
No, I think.
And it's.
I think we should do that first, and eventually I, I can see us opening up again. But it's like, I think Lisa Lawler made the comment regarding a new variant of the, it's more deadly, more, you pass it on easier.
And Zoom, and the Zoom option is not going away.
No, I mean, as far as access to our meetings, we've got, we've got more access to our meetings now than we, than we ever did because we do have Zoom. We, you can call in just on your phone.
Right.
It used to be, we had the board meeting here, and if you weren't here, you missed the whole thing. You had to just read minutes.
Or watch it on YouTube.
Right, or watch on YouTube, right. So there is plenty of the access, so.
Once it began, it's hard to get rid of.
Yeah.
Right.
And it, I believe is very effective.
Oh, and our neighbors are finding out some fallout as well, that, you know, they offered Zoom for a while, and then they quit doing it, and there's a little bit of public dismay and outrage, so.
Not everybody can just leave their job to drive to Eldora.
Correct.
Sit for the meeting and then drive back. So yeah, I'm wholeheartedly believe, believe we need to keep Zoom and the phone lines open.
Yeah, I'd agree. So I would entertain a motion to implement a personal accountability tag system with some type of color coding or something that differentiates our customers for the treasurer's office and the assessors office, those two meeting specific, and just know that those will be on a first come, first served basis.
And I would recommend maybe having badges specifically for speakers.
Right.
That Angelo, normally, not always will you know if the person's actually gonna come, but if somebody wants to be on the agenda, you'll usually know. So we could have those printed up, and if it's somebody in relation to speaking on the agenda, that's, or that's brought an agenda item to us.
It'd be like if Judy Funk was here for Heartland Risk.
Right, right.
That we would make sure that she has some priority to be here. Or if, you know, when we have HVAC stuff going on, that reliable one could send somebody in. So I think it's important that we set aside a couple of those badges for access as well.
Right.
But I, I agree with Julie's comments that, you know, there's a lot to be gained by being here in person. So.
Just as long as everybody understands that when their tags are out, they're out.
Right.
When you said standing room, do that mean standing room in the hallway?
In the hallway, yeah.
Or not, not allow them in because we got too many people in the courthouse, I, just clarification.
I think even in the hallway is better access than no access at all.
Okay, so we could have two such tags, hall tags and.
Right, we could have chairs out in the hall for.
Yeah. Julie has more comments.
Oh, I, I did want to say that I appreciate your willingness to do that, and I think that will work for a time when you feel more comfortable to let anyone in. But I think it's a good, it's a good compromise, and I appreciate it, thank you. And I still am not, don't plan on sharing my business with, with a hall monitor when I come in there. But thank you, I appreciate the willingness to change. The, I see Renee, that you are questioning what I say. I do not.
I don't understand it.
When I, when I come into the courthouse, it is my business why I am there. Unless, but I realize that if I'm gonna come to a Board of Supervisor meeting, sure, I'll say I need a tag, so I would have to tell the security at the door why I'm there, so I can get a tag. But other than that, I don't, I don't see the need to, see the need to tell Quaker Security why I'm there, so I probably won't do that. Though I do understand that if I had to go take a driver's test, that yes, an appointment is required. But other than that, I'm gonna keep my business private, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thomas?
Can I just add?
Absolutely.
We'll do that by the fire code.
Okay.
The number of seats that you can have in here and by the limit in the hallway.
Okay.
Okay.
So Thomas just stated that we'll do the calculation and issue the number of tags based on the, I'm guessing, International Building Codes fire standards for both this room and the hallway area. So we'll get the number of tags ready to be issued and, and have that discussion with Kerry and Quaker Security.
And I'd just like to say for clarification for Pauline, we have moved the flag clear to the back of the room, it's up against the wall, and I can almost reach it from here. So we have moved everything back, and I think we have maximum area that we can actually allow at this point and still be able to get in and out from the table. So we will have more capacity than what we, than we did earlier.
So do we want to direct Thomas to come, get to the Fire Marshal or go through the Fire Marshal's code as far as capacity wise?
Seven square feet per, per chair.
Okay. And then bring that to us in next week's meeting for approval.
I, I'm, I would rather get people back in the building sooner, so.
You can just do it between now and then, I, I know.
And give him, I have no reason to question the numbers that he represents, and get that number of badges minus Michael's, three of us, Taylor is almost always here.
Angela's.
Angela. Subtract that from the, the total and have that many badges available.
Just a motion on the floor, you're still kind of searching for the words?
We're haggling.
Okay.
Okay, we've just authorized Thomas to set up the room consistent with the fire code.
I think that's a good idea.
An arrangement.
But the reason I said bring it back to next week's meeting is it says discussion on return. There's no discussion action item.
Okay.
Otherwise, I I don't have a problem doing something, but we didn't have it as an action item.
Okay. So informally, we can direct Thomas to get those standards put in place and we can formally adopt them next week. In the meantime, I think that. By next week, if Julie and Pauline want to be here, I I. I don't see anything that would prevent them from being here. And those numbers should be just fine for next week, but we need to formally adopt them. But I'd like to invite Julie and Pauline, if they want to be here next week, to go ahead and be here and just know that they'll check in and. And but probably the week following, then we'll go to the badge system. But I just, I couldn't agree with Julie more that we would need to have the in-person feedback and and participation. Okay, so. Okay, so Angela, will you add the actionable item for next week? Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody, for your input. Next, I have an application for liquor license from Timber's Edge Wedding and Event Center.
We skipped the fire.
Oh. I have a previous one, sorry. Okay, so I have the application for fireworks permit for Bob Gurkey. That is the location or date, July 3rd, 2021. At nineteen seven forty-seven, two hundred and fifth street on the west side of the lake away from spectators. Um, the application is complete, but once again. The, if the county is under a burn ban on the planned date of the fireworks display, this permit is void. Again, we can approve it today and hopefully we get an inch of rain, gentle, nice rain. For the next, you know, seven, eight days and the burn ban can be lifted. If it's not lifted at that point, if this permit is passed and approved today, it will not be valid.
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Again, if the area is under a burn ban on the planned date of fireworks display, this permit is void. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the application for liquor license, Timber's Edge Wedding and Event Center.
I'm like motion to approve Timber's Edge liquor licenses, twelve month license.
I'll second it.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion?
Effective six twenty or twenty-one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item I have is the client confirmation of schedules and exposures and client authorization to buying coverage with Heartland. Insurance pool.
I'll make a motion to approve the Heartland Insurance First Pool renewal.
No, I'll second. I have motion of second, any discussion? Lance, um, last week during Judy Funk's presentation. With the rate of inflation and the cost of building materials, we did talk about.
Increasing.
Increasing the coverage on county office buildings as replacement values. And those things have dramatically increased, so we. Asked Judy to increase the coverage with consideration of that increase today, so. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next we have is the consideration of the community services updated mode of operations plan. This is the centralized community services operations plan for fiscal year 2022. We've done this every year. This is just how business is conducted within that entity.
I'll make a motion to approve the community services updated mode of operations plan.
Yeah, I will second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is a change of status. Actually, four in the county attorney's office. I'll yield before the county attorney.
Engage.
Oh. Yep. Consideration of the engagement letter with Bowman, Miller, PC for external auditing services.
I'm like a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? This is just to formally engage with Bowman and Miller out of Marshalltown to perform the external auditing services. As outlined in the contract or engagement letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, discussion on the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two appropriations. So on repeaters, it asks that we discuss this and we have something.
Obviously, some of these have to be a hundred percent.
Correct.
And I think we need to do the hundred percent on those. I don't know that we need to release the full hundred percent to the entire. Group at this point. Last year we did fifty percent. We revisited it in Jan- January and released another forty, another ten. I think we can go over the fifty percent at this time. To respect to Taylor's department, we have to go seventy-five percent according to the state law, correct? So it would make sense that we do the seventy-five percent at this time. And then after we revisit our audit, everything's done at the end of the year. We know where we're exactly at.
Okay. I think that's a reasonable plan and. This isn't an actionable item, but do you want to convey that, our discussion to auder repeaters?
If you guys are on board with that, I think the minutes would reflect that seventy-five percent is what we can have put on for next week's approval. Along with a hundred percent of those that need to be.
Right, by.
Right.
By statute.
Yep, like I believe Thomas's is a hundred percent. We can't tell them no.
Right, yep. So if you want to have that conversation with Audrey Peters, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. Next item is a change of status in the county attorney's office. Attorney Meyer, floor is yours.
Here to explain what the basis for the increases are. The board had approved the two percent across the board for county employees. And. At the time we submitted our budget, I had already. Built these increases into the budget that was presented to the board. And so I'm just here to ask or explain why I'm asking for these modest increases.
During the budget time, you talked to us on these increases as well and said you would do a change of status at that time.
Correct, then that process was explained to any department head that said, hey, two percent, but we're just trying to stay in line with everybody else. And so we explained to our department heads and other elected officials, if that was the case, we'd appreciate you bringing the change of status and some type of justification statement for those changes status. At the appropriate time, so I appreciate you following our recommendations.
And in due respect to some of the departments, we met with them before we made that statement, so that was reflected on the sheets.
Right.
So let me give you. I see that we have a caseload that is more burdened than it has been in the past. Now, some of that has been due to the the COVID and the backlog of cases that we're having to process through now, having come in after a second. Courthouse lockdown, but just giving example, in this year, we began the year with eighty-four. Felony cases that were active. We've since added thirty-six cases, additional felony cases to that caseload. But we've resolved fifty-one, so we're gaining on it, so our our office is being more efficient, more productive, so we're. You know, I'm expecting more out of them and they're they're giving me more productivity. And as far as other indictable cases, these would all be like jury trial type cases. We began the year with two hundred and fifty-five open cases. We've since added a hundred and fourteen to that, but we've resolved a hundred and twenty-eight. So again, we're starting to nibble away at getting these numbers down. And I looked historically, how are we doing on these carryover cases? And these numbers are considerably higher than than they were. The first, January first of two thousand and nineteen, when I I started our felony carryover, we started the year with fifty-two. Again, this year we started with eighty-four, so we are seeing an increase in the caseload. And so we're, you know, with the staff we have, we're just expecting them to to do more and and so I wanted to. Compensate them for the work they're doing and doing things more efficiently and and giving me what I asked for. So that's, that's the basic reason, but then I I've also noticed we've got our cost of living. Inflation is probably higher than at the time we were putting these budgets together. And conservatively, they're saying it's five percent, but probably more realistically, eight or above at this point. And so a two percent raise just didn't seem sufficient in order to pay cut in reality. So this will at least attempt to keep up with inflation as well. So those are my reasons for the change in status.
All right.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Lance, anything?
At the most, I'm seeing sixty cents an hour.
Right.
Above the two percent increase. And you're, you're not talking large percent increases, you're talking sixty cents an hour at the maximum of all these.
Correct.
All right, the first consideration is that of Renee Springsteen. She's part-time office staff. At a rate of fifteen, fifteen hour effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, for consideration is Assistant County Attorney Christopher Klein. His salary will increase to seventy-four thousand dollars effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is a change of status effective July first, twenty twenty-one for Carol Fletcher. To a salary of forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The fourth and final change says consideration effective July first, twenty twenty-one is that of Cliff Corey, paralegal. At a salary of forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I'll move it up.
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Just a blanket, thank you to the folks over there. We see the caseload stalled, but at the same time, behaviors didn't change that much. And so while we're eating away at the sheer numbers, the people have definitely stepped up and I would concur with what Attorney Meyer said is, you know. They're being asked to do a lot of catch-up work and and sometimes in some very unique environments and circumstances, so thank you. With that said, all in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next I have is a change of status with IRVM. Effective July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, Justin Gedkin. At a rate of twenty-one dollars an hour with a potential twenty-five cent per hour raise after a six-month probationary period.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion?
Yeah, um, this is, will be a second employee for IRVM. This is due to the fact that the contract that we had going on, the guys didn't show up. So we need to fill this position faster. I don't know that we're going to take them again in the fall. I believe you left that open, but we planned on doing this as January either way.
Right.
So there is a large cost savings by doing this. And I do see the guys are out there quite a bit right now, too.
You won't get the same productivity of having a group of, you know, fifteen guys come in, it's great, but like you said, it's a guy all year doing other things too, so.
Yep, and you'll be using utilizing them in the winter for either brush control or. Machine race salt, sand, spreading, so.
Yep, yep. Any other discussion, Renee?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, I have a single change of status at the sheriff's office. Effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, Jason Foltz. It is a demotion, the jail sergeant to full-time correctional officer. The employee requested this. At a rate of twenty fifty-two an hour.
Make a motion to approve.
No, second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I I had this one. We didn't do this last week, did we?
Uh, I believe. Scott Bright, okay, and then I have one for Scott Bright.
It's a resignation.
Is a resignation as correctional officer effective June twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. He was being paid at a rate of eighteen thirty-five an hour.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Other business, Lance. Renee?
Nope.
I have nothing. At this point, I can ask for adjournment or to recess.
Adjourn.
So second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjourn, thank you.